Okay, today is Tuesday, July 16th, 2019. I call this village board meeting order. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik?
Here.
Trustee Feichter?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Here.
Trustee Prakno?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Now, you used to not go in last, huh? I know. I was actually looking, going, doing alphabetical order in my head, seeing who's picture was gonna be last.
Okay, we call the board meeting order, ready to get started. Uh, we call this Commodore night. They might be listening to us right now in the back room behind us, so, uh, you gotta make sure we do a good job, right? No singing, though.
Well, I wasn't planning on it.
Okay. Uh, we don't have, uh, any minister or priest here tonight for indication, but we'll do the pledge allegiance. Everyone, please rise. The flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Folks, please be seated. Judge, you see that town in Minnesota? They did away with the pledge, and after all the heat that they got, they put it back in the meeting.
Yeah.
It was on the news.
Good.
Okay, we need approval of minutes of June 18th, 2019.
Approval of minutes of June 18th, 2019, dispense with the meeting.
Second.
The reading, you mean?
The reading.
At the meeting?
The meeting, the reading. That's close.
We needed the meeting.
The reading, we need the meeting.
Okay, uh, we have a motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Listner. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, let the record show you now, so approval. Um, move on, mayor and board of trustees report just a few items tonight. Um, go through here. First off, over the past, uh, actually month, had some things going on. We went to the Yamazan groundbreaking over at Northwest Point, and just like tonight, you notice the rain avoided. It's almost like, I told the Yamazan folks, we parted the clouds, they always like went around us. Then we got done, about what, 20 minutes later, skies opened up.
Yep.
So, we got it done, it worked out good, it went well. And then on July 4th, of course, we had a Melissa Etheridge concert and fireworks, great crowd turned out. Again, what happened that day? All the rain went around us, we're like Moses, we just parted the rain clouds and go around us. Office of State shut their thing down. We had so much ad-.
Don't jinx us.
No, I parted it tonight, we're fine.
Oh, okay.
Nothing to worry about.
You did.
Uh, then on July 6th, we had bike with the mayor. Uh, went very well with the park system, friends of cycling. Dave does an absolute phenomenal job putting all that together, and, um, went well, good weather again, and no crashes. So that's even better. And no flat tires, right trustee Prakno?
Nope.
No flat tires.
No flat tire, flat seat, but no flat tires.
You were riding so long.
I know, I know.
I give you credit for that. Uh, on Monday, May 8th, I mean July 8th, Maggie joined with me, Mr. Nekabaka, we had a tour of Orange Crush's new facilities here in Elk Grove Village. And, I'll tell you something, now that worked out well, 'cause the towway needed the land for the northern connection of the Ring Road, and moved over. Orange Crush has all brand-new facilities. It is so quiet, so dust-free, it is beyond belief.
Really?
What they do. And they got double the trucks going through, they doubled the capacity, and it just was unbelievable, was it? I mean, we walked, well, Attorney Strino had a suit on, clean as could be, went through the whole, walked on all the yards, all that. They do a great job, so, uh, we're glad to see that, and we appreciate our Sam Palumbo for inviting us, and turned out very well. Then last Tuesday, July 9th, Dennis DeYoung came. Um, remember, Boss Skaggs was supposed to play, couldn't make it, um, due to illness, and Dennis DeYoung came in, and we had one, he did one nice job. Great show, great concert, great crowd, so that went very well. Then this past weekend, believe it or not, miracles happened, July Saturday and Sunday, Queen of the Rosie allowed me to speak to all the services on the Elk Grove Cares program, and went very well. Ovations at the event, and, um, it went well to get the word out. Matter of fact, we were able to announce, we have two more people went into the program in the past month, and, um, it's up to eighteen now, of which eleven are still going through the program, and the longest, um, in our program, uh, sober, is a woman from August, so it'll be one-year anniversary next month. So it's making a difference. We just got that new state grant, or getting a new state grant, right Chuck?
We did get it.
We did get it, what is that, seventy?
Uh, seventy-six thousand.
Seventy-six thousand dollar grant from the state. We got one last year, we got another one this year. Our initial investment of a half a million dollars, the vast majority of that money is still there. Um, the state grants are stepping up, helping us out, so remember, Elk Grove Cares making a difference. We are making a difference, we wanna keep making sure. So I thank Queen of the Rosie, and, I'm glad to announce, on July 27th and 28th, our last place of worship, St. Julian, has invited me to speak at all four masses on Sunday and Saturday evening mass, and after that's done, we went to every place of worship in Elk Grove to talk about Elk Grove Care Program. We're getting people from, uh, going to those meetings, volunteers and the rest, and, um, I wanna thank, uh, the churches for doing it, I really appreciate all that. Uh, remember tonight, as I mentioned earlier, the Commodores, next week, Winona and the Big Noise, and we finish up two weeks from tonight with Night Ranger. So it's all going well, and we're excited about that. Um, before I read a statement here, um, the governor, Mr. Nekabaka, over the twenty-two years I've been mayor, I've probably been asked a half a dozen times if I could marry people. You know that, I've asked you many times, all that.
Not to get married, you just asked me if you could.
Well, both, I wanna marry you, plus I wanna know if I could marry us. Uh, but Governor Pritzker, in June, signed a bill that mayors can now marry people. Yes. So I'm already telling Michelle, my oldest, who's, you know, been married once before, and she's now with a young man, and I said, Michelle, your father, she started laughing, and, uh, but, we cannot, and nice thing is, we can't charge ya, which we wouldn't anyway, I wouldn't anyways. We, so it's, I can do free weddings for people.
What do they call that ceremony?
Lucky? I don't know, what do they call it?
What you're authorized to do. Officiate?
Officiate a marriage, yeah. I don't know. Why, you thinking about getting married, Mr. Nekabaka?
No.
But you're a spat, didn't I? We're all going for it. So anyways, if anyone wants to get married, let me know, I'd be more than happy to help you out. Uh, last, I'd like to read a statement if I could. Um, last week, a referendum question, uh, for the March 2020 primary was presented to the village clerk here in Elk Grove. The question presented was to limit, um, was to term lim, or was limited to just the village board. Just the village board was impacted, and it was a term limit questionnaire of two terms or eight years. The uniqueness of this one, it would also be retroactive. What that means is myself as mayor and all the trustees except trustee Schmidt could not run again for office. So in effect, if this passes, six of the seven board members would be precluded from running for office again. So in about a year from now, over a year from now, fourth, seventh board would be done. And then trustee, uh, Zarnik and Listner would be two years after that. As I said before, that's very unique, I think we know of only one community that that has been instituted in. Normally, term limits, if they're passed by a community, go forward, not retroactive. The vast majority of the petitions that were turned in, seventy-seven percent to be exact, were circulated by outsiders. What I mean by outsiders, those are people that do not live in Elk Grove Village, many of them came from the city of Chicago. The few that were from village residents did not turn in enough petitions to place the question on the ballot. Hence, the need for outsiders, who were paid professionals, to circulate petitions to get enough, um, on the ballot, and, I'm trying to make sure I say it right, to get enough on the ballot. Since this occurred, the village clerk, elected officials, and village staff have heard from numerous residents that these outsiders were saying misleading and outright falsehoods about what was on the actual petitions they were circulating. Tonight, we just wanna present the facts that we know them as of today. No opinions, nothing further, just the facts. And I'm sure over the next few months, a lot of more things will be coming up on this subject, and maybe even longer than that. So that's all we have to say tonight, these are what we know as of now, and as I said before, I'm sure more information will be coming out in the future. So with that said, Mr. Nekabaka, trustees report. We'll start tonight with trustee Schmidt.
I have no report tonight.
Trustee Prakno?
Yes, I have a few things to report. Uh, just a reminder that we are in, in summer, so we still have our, um, Elk Grove Farmers Market every Saturday morning from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., right outside here in the village municipal parking lot, and we're getting some fresh produce in from the farms in the surrounding areas. I've, the tomatoes and the cucumbers and the carrots and a lot of the fresh vegetables, um, are coming out now, the corn is coming in, and, uh, it's a delightful market, please try and stop by every, any, every Saturday through October from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Also, um, I wanted to say that we had our, um, annual village picnic of sorts. The event is called Play, Picnic, and Party. It was this past Sunday, July 14th, in cooperation with the Elk Grove Park District, the Elk Grove Library, and the village, we had a giant celebration. This started a few years back when we were celebrating one of our larger anniversaries, and decided that it was such a popular event that we would continue doing it. Um, the park district had several different types of free events for the children and families to participate in, rock climbing, inflatables, slides, all kinds of games. The village had touch-a-truck, um, food at reduced cost from tasty catering. The library did, um, an ice cream social, there were bands, there was mu, music, there were games, and everything was either very, very low-priced or not, no price at all. So it was a very popular event, we had a great turnout, the weather turned out great, so, um, I think it's gonna continue on as an annual event, I know the village would support something like that. It was a very nice family event, and, uh, that concludes my report.
Uh, thank you trustee Prakno. Trustee, listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually don't have a report, but I was at Queen of the Rosie on Sunday when you spoke, and, uh, several people spoke with me after the service, and they said you did a phenomenal job, and, uh, they found it, uh, very interesting the way you presented the entire program, and, uh, they were very pleased with what they heard, and I would just wanna commend you again for, uh, coming to Q R that weekend and giving your presentation. I know it took you so long, but.
Um, I asked Father Fred if I get three, uh, credits, 'cause I went to three masses, do I get three weeks of credit for going to church? And when I go to St. Julian, it'll be five, so I should get eight weeks of credit going to church, so.
All summer.
I get a little break, right?
All summer.
All summer, yeah, I'm all.
I don't think it works that way.
Ah, he gave me an answer. He got three envelopes out of me, I don't have one.
Oh, sure.
He did. He did, I gave him three envelopes. How you sit in church and come out with a plate? The mayor, and, I'm gonna stiff the church, I can't do that.
Pay online.
No, I get money. So I got three, you got three envelopes, so. Okay, with that, trustee Zarnik?
Thank you. Uh, just to remind you that the Frank Zarnik Scholarship Golf Outing is Friday, August 9th, 1:00 p.m. at Fox Run Golf Course. Um, the cost is ninety dollars for golf, cart, and dinner, and loads of fun. Uh, so you, please join us and, uh, call the course at 847-228-3544 to sign up. This is the only way we raise funds to help the students with those scholarships. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Last but not least, trustee Feichter.
We opened up at the library, uh, this past Friday, um, a Bulgarian photo exhibit, and I was really happy to see so many Bulgarians there, as well as village staff, our two chiefs, uh, people, uh, many of our trustees were there, our mayor came, we had the consul general of Bulgaria who came in, and, uh, it's an exhibit on, um, something that, uh, the, you know, that Chief Walsh and I, uh, it, it was something that we experienced when we were in Bulgaria in January, and, uh, it, a lot of things, these are masks that people wear, and they parade, it's a celebration, and so it goes back to a time when they were trying to chase away evil spirits. So if you go to the library and you see that, uh, the exhibits that are up there, that's what it's all about, and, uh, we had a good time, um, and, uh, it worked out very, very well, and we have a very good relationship, I think, now with the Bulgarian, uh, uh, community, and that concludes my report.
Thank you trustee Feichter. Move on now, accounts payable warrant, first one is June 30th, 2019.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for June 30th, 2019, in the amount of five million, four, seven hundred and four dollars, five hundred and, seven hundred and four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
Uh, we have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. Um, Lloyd, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Aye.
Trustee Prakno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik? Aye.
Uh, motion passes five to nothing. Accounts payable warrant for July 16th, 2019.
Move we ex, a move we accept the accounts payable warrant for July 16th, 2019, in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner, and the objection court, the vote was previously demonstrated, five to nothing. Tonight, we have consent agenda items, A, as in, alligator?
You could.
Not alligator.
Me, that's on four.
That's not great.
Not great, but it's good. Through A, C.
Alligator and crocodile.
Alligator and crocodile. It's a stretch, it's not bad. And the Chicago lagoon, alright, okay. So, we have, uh, consent agenda items A through A, C. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Feichter, a second by trustee Listner. Staff or board members have any questions or comment on any consent agenda items? Anybody in the audience on the consent agenda items? Not public speaking, just consent agenda items. None? Seeing none? Hearing none? And with our objection, according to vote, is previously demonstrated, five to nothing. We move on now, bear with me, I apologize to regular agenda, Mr. Rumel.
Uh, mayor, board of trustees, we do have a request from Lumalnais to change their signage across the street from the tech park. Uh, Lumalnais had seen that the tech park is doing, uh, a yeoman's job and creating a, a very attractive environment, and they wanted to do their part as well by replacing their old sign that was there by variation with a brand-new sign that is also by variation. Um, picture of the sign is on the very last page of your agenda, should you like to see it? And a representative of the sign company is present, should you have any questions?
Okay, um, everyone loves Lumalnais pizza, so, um, and they already fixed up their parking lot, you noticed, and, which is nice, it's really going along with what the tech park's doing. Any questions, concerns, comments? So what do we need to do on this one? Do, voice vote? Okay, I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show you now, so approval. Who's here tonight, your ma'am? Thank you very much. You know, now, we're going a long way for all the folks here, a couple of pizzas coming in with ya. I would've been, right, folks? Wouldn't it been nice if we had Lumalnais pizza? I think only appropriate.
I'll let the owners know, I'm with the sign company.
Okay, you're off the hook. Stick around for the Commodores.
Thank you.
Okay, bye. Uh, okay, we move on, plant commission, Mr. Rumel?
Uh, mayor, board of trustees, you do have one item under the plant commission this evening, and that is, uh, PC docket nineteen dash six. And essentially, what's happened is that there were five unincorporated lots over on Devon Avenue, um, over by the 711, I guess is probably the best way to describe it, and, um, the village annexed those properties, and then someone came in and wanted to convert those properties from residential to, uh, light industrial. So you have a request in front of you that went to the plant commission, uh, for approximately eight acres, with four and a half acres being one industrial zone lot that would accommodate a seventy-seven thousand square foot spec building, and a three and a quarter acre lot that would accommodate a sixty-one thousand square foot building as well. Uh, the plant commission did, after hearing the issue, recommend that the village board unanimously grant the, uh, the request for the construction, the subdivision, the variations, the, uh, rezoning, and all those items associated with making this development happen, and I do believe that a representative from the, uh, from the firm is here this evening.
Now, is there any, um, is there any residents here in reference to this property being rezoned? I know one woman showed up at the public hearing, plant commission. Um, no one here? Okay, um, I think it was pretty clear what they're doing, they're looking to build two buildings, uh, truck will be facing interior toward each other, uh, so there'll be minimal impact, there'll be a wall, landscaping along toward the homes on, um, Maple, right? That's Maple, yeah, Maple there. So, and there's a two-hundred-foot right away, so there'll be plenty of distance there, it will clean up that whole area, 'cause right now, we have poultry, zebass, build a concrete guy, so clean up that whole area, they're gonna do a lot of landscaping, the exterior of the building's gonna look very nice when they're done. Um, I know folks from Apollo, it's kinda what's going on now in this town, these businesses, uh, our property's very valuable, and, um, these businesses are trying to gobble up as much as they can, because they can't find enough in, uh, this area, and Elk Grove is a place that businesses wanna be located. So, any questions the trustees have or anything? I think plant commission did a very fine job on the meeting, went through all the facts, uh, we got all the information on that. If not, I need, uh, to direct the attorney, prepare necessary documents. Um, can I motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee, Listner, or second by trustee Feichter. Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show you now, so approval. Um, we're, okay, you, you do not need return for August 13th meeting. It's gonna be a mere formality, um, since it was unanimous by plant commission, it's unanimous by us, it'll be on the consent agenda, but it will not change. So you don't have to return, you're set to go. If you wanna start working sooner than August 13th, you have our permission, just work with Mary Jo's department, get the permits, get whatever you need to get going. We wanna thank you for choosing Elk Grove, we thank you for working with us on our concerns, on aesthetics, on protecting the residents behind you, you did a great job, we're excited that you got this development coming, and wish you nothing but the best of luck. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anything else, Mr. Rumel?
That was it for the plant commission and the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, uh, move on, youth committee, trustee Frankie's not here, anybody have anything to add?
I do.
Trustee Prakno?
Sorry. Uh, this past Friday, we had our first, uh, summer splash party. We had a record number, two hundred and eighty-four students attended the splash party, it was the most we've ever had, it was a great night, the weather was perfect. We have one more in August, and that will be Friday, August 9th, and that runs from 8:15 until 10:15, and it is, and free and open to all sixth, entering sixth grade through eleventh grade students. So, another event in cooperation with, with the park district that's free, and one of the things our families can enjoy in this community, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Business leaders forum, trustee Schmidt?
Yes, I'll, um, defer to trustee Listner, although we do have one company that, uh, trustee Listner did not attend, and that was on the 19th of June, we went to Acme Finishing, trustee Zarnik and I, along with Josh Groden and Nick Radcliffe, and, uh, this company employs about sixty-five full-time employees, and about anywhere from thirty-five to fifty part-time, they're at fifteen ninety-five Oakton, and they put, uh, coatings on metals, it was very interesting to see the process, they put powder coating on metal, on metal parts, and also liquid paint, and they showed us the whole process, and they do auto parts there, they do, uh, like the panels, if you have a, if you have a, a metal desk, they paint the metal on the desk, it's a very interesting process, and very, very, uh, 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 productive company, been here a long time, and they're very successful in the community, it was, uh, it was interesting to learn how they do this process, so, I'll turn over the rest to Sam.
Trustee Listner?
Thank you Steve, thank you mayor. Yes, uh, the other two places we visited didn't turn out too well, one is Helm Tool, and they're looking to maybe move to new, uh, new location, and, uh, Blackout Transport, we had a, uh, conflict, the owner, there was a time difference, so we really never got to speak with them, but we do have some upcoming visits, uh, over the next two weeks or so, uh, one is Kemplate, which, uh, that's, uh, actually.
They've, they've been at Elk Grove for a long time.
Yes.
I was a kid getting stickers from them.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we used to collect stickers, when, they had, yeah, they've been a long time.
Well, that's, uh, on the 22nd, on the 22nd, 26th, we're visiting America here's, and on August 19th, we have Mitsumi. So we got, uh, three visits coming up in the next few weeks, and that concludes our report.
Thank you. Uh, cable television committee, trustee Listner?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we met yesterday with, uh, for the towns that are part of the franchise renewal program. Uh, the meeting progressed, but a little slower than we would've liked, but, uh, it's a tough time of the year with vacations, and, um, part of the meeting was dealing with, uh, Channel 18, which is the old Harper Channel, which doesn't really have anything on it any longer, but, uh, uh, I think everyone involved seems to wanna get programming back on that from the education community, and this is a tough time to reach, uh, schools, since they're all off for the summer. So we're meeting again in August, and maybe we'll have more to report then. And that concludes their report.
Thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik?
Thank you. There'll be a blood drive on Saturday, July 27th, in the lower level of the Charles J. Zetic Municipal Building, and that's from eight till noon. Uh, please consider donating, there's usually a shortage during the summer months, so your help would be much appreciated, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Holman, they came and picked up the kids for ya? That's good, for ya, I know. Information Committee, trustee Listner?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let me get to that page. Uh, first of all, the Information Committee is meeting this Thursday, July 25th, at 10:00 a.m. to, uh, meet with, oh, I'm sorry, in two weeks, uh, the 25th. Where's this summer going? But anyway.
Don't speed it up.
Uh, we're talking, we're gonna be talking about the new website redesign, we're looking forward to it. Uh, many, uh, residents, uh, have been, uh, giving their input, there's been a survey on the village website for several weeks now, in fact, it's still out there if somebody wants to add their views, uh, what they'd like to see, but anyway, that's coming up on the 25th, and I think, once the new site is available, I think everyone will, uh, really like it. Uh, the other couple of things is, one, the Youth Police Academy starts August 5th, there's still twelve positions open, so if there's any, what are the ages on there, again, chief?
Twelve to fourteen.
Twelve, fourteen. Anyway, if anyone's still interested, they call the, uh, crime from convention, uh, number at the police department, they can still get registered for it, it's a worthwhile program. And then, on August 21st, the Neighborhood Watch, uh, group is meeting again, uh, the first meeting was very successful, and the news, uh, news was out from there, and they're meeting on August 21st in the village hall here, I'm not sure the room number, but it's probably one of the ones, uh, in the lower level. And that concludes my report.
Uh, thank you trustee Listner. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feichter?
No report.
Still beating, so, okay. That's better than defibrillator. Uh, Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik?
Okay, reminder, the parade is Saturday, September 23rd, it's conjunction with the Elk Grove's Oktoberfest. Uh, we're getting the application, so please get yours in, so that we can make sure everyone's included. Uh, don't forget, the food pantry is going to be collecting items along the parade, so you can bring an item or two, or whatever, to place in the carts as they go along. Our grand marshal is Kitty Weiner, she'll be leading the parade, she's a member of the Elk Grove Rotary Club, Character Coalition, and she was instrumental in raising money for the VFW Elevator Fund. Uh, she'll be riding in the Corvette that was raffled off, uh, in 2017 by the winner of that car, Gary Sprague, so please come and see and join us on that day. Uh, we wanna thank all our sponsors, I'll announce them at the next, uh, uh, meeting, and, uh, our next meeting, parade meeting, will be August 5th, 5:30 p.m., Room E of the Zetic Municipal Building. And that concludes my report.
And I was, Miss, when I didn't say, I apologize on behalf of the board tonight, we're dressed casual, more casual than usual, because the concert tonight, it's a one-time-a-year reaction comfortable, and unfortunately, one-time-a-year, I have to look at Mr. Nekabaka's legs, but there's good with damp and everything. Okay, move on to Personnel Committee, trustee Frankie's not here, anybody have a report?
No.
Seeing none? Judiciary Plan and Zoning Committee, trustee Prakno?
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Zarnik?
Uh, the MFT Residential Rehabilitation Program is progressing, um, and I'm sure you've seen the 2019 asphalt rejuvenation that's been performed on various road- Um, and I'm sure you've seen the 2019 asphalt rejuvenation that's been performed on various roadways. This program is also now complete, and the next few weeks, the surface of the rejuvenated roads will begin to lighten and fade back out to the normal-looking pavement color. And that concludes my report.
And then cleaning the bricks and stuff will be going soon? Okay, that's what I thought. And we're supposed to gain, what, five years' life? Extra life?
That's the plan, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, we've been tested, we tested it last year
Right.
on industrial streets, and seemed to do well.
Right.
So, so that's what's going on. You see, like, Elk Grove Boulevard. I know a lot of residents, they Facebook, they have a field day. Why aren't they doing the... Be patient, folks. We know what we're doing. We have to follow process and sequence before we get everything finished. You can't do things too quick sometimes. So, um, the chemical breakdown, it's almost like when you seal coat your driveway, your asphalt driveway. It prolongs its life. So, the hope is that this seal coating will give an extra five years' life to the asphalt. That's a huge, huge savings if that works. We tested it last year in the industrial park and seemed to be effective, especially after the winter we had. It was a great test for it. So, well, hopefully it works out. Any extra we get will save a fortune in money on, uh, working on the street, so, uh, thank you. We appreciate you coming up with that, and, uh, go ahead and getting it going. I appreciate it. Uh, we move on now to Airport Update. There's no report now, except the good news is, out of the FAA, we do not have to do a new EIS study. So, we can get moving on the Fly Quiet program that we've been working very hard on. Remember, there's gonna be two Fly Quiets, one now until they get the last runways done for 2021. And it won't be next summer, unfortunately, because they're gonna be doing a lot of construction. So, the Fly Quiet will be like during this winter and then the next winter. And then by then, we should have a rotation plan in place, hopefully, when the full build-out is complete. Midsummer Concert Classic Series, we talked about it earlier, moving along. Special Events Committee, next one will be trustee Frankie's, uh, Frankie Fest, Oktoberfest. So, that'll be coming up in September. Looking forward to have one with the parade. Uh, no report under Liquor Commission? Report from Village Manager, Mr. Romo.
I have no report this evening.
And Lori, any report from Clerk?
No report.
Is there any items any trustees wish to bring up today? Wait a minute, there's no unfinished business on Mr. Knucklebacker.
Holy cow, as usual, I see nothing there.
Good.
Anything for trustees, before we go out to the audience? Okay, I know some people wish to address us briefly tonight. I'll, Jim, I'll let you go first if you come up. Now, hang on. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promise I keep it...
I don't.
Uh, just wanted to, uh, go on record to let, um, the board know that, uh, the residents of Repolo Subdivision, formerly, uh, also known as Land Meyer Repolo Subdivision, uh, have uncovered documentation, uh, that we, uh, under your direction, will, uh, present to the Planning Committee. It is a, uh, restrictive, uh, land covenant which disallows, uh, the, the lots in... I'll state directly from it, "All lots in the subdivision shall be known and described as residential lots. Structures in the subdivision shall be created for and exclusively as single-family dwellings." You've heard, uh, you've heard a couple other incidents in regard to, uh, ethnicity. Uh, there, there has been a revision. That revision took place on February 8th of 1957, allowing this, uh, document to stay, uh, fully legal. So, our concerns are for this development. Uh, there are residents that, uh, felt, feel that the safety of our children, uh, if a building like this is built, uh, it will upset the, it will set, upset the water table with us all being on well and septic there. Uh, there, there's numerous, uh, concerns that, uh, we will continue to express, uh, when given that opportunity in front of the Planning Commission. We just wanted to, uh, state our concern to the board, uh, in regards to this, because we know if this development were to take place, it would be annexed into Elk Grove Village.
Okay, Jim, thing, real quick, if they make a deal with all the homeowners, then obviously all fine, right?
If they make a fair deal with all the landowners, it, that's gonna be up to the landowners. Uh, obviously, every landowner is going to have a difference of opinion as far as what's fair to them or not. But, I mean, as far as one meeting, i- it would basically have to be an all-or-nothing deal.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And folks, we thank you again for coming tonight. As you know, from what we did last time with you, talking, try to help get more fair compensation. You know, we wanna be fair with everybody involved. We're trying our best to have a... Again, you're not part of Elk Grove right now, and in all honesty, if the plan does not come to fruition, it's not something that the village will be upset with either way. I mean, if it works, God bless. If it doesn't, that's fine, too. So, just so you know, uh, it's not something that the village has brought forward or pushed is by a private developer. Just so everyone's fine with that. Uh, Mr. Hassan, are you okay to wait till next, to the meetings?
I would like that document to be stricked out, because the language of that doc... I don't want my name to be associated to that document. The language of that document is very racist, and it should be stricken out. You guys should not consider that we have other different things to defend our neighborhood, okay? From this development, but that document should be stricken out, and it should be illegal to be used. I don't want my name to be associated with that document, and I don't advise any of my neighbors to use that document for that derby and that mission. That's a racist document.
Now, Mr....
According to it, I shouldn't be in that neighborhood. A lot of my other neighborhood, a lot of my other neighbors shouldn't be in the neighborhood.
Well, Mr. Hassan, just so you know, Mr. Hassan, no one up here disagrees with you. No one disagrees with you. It's a very racist document, but, as Jim said, it was stricken out of the official record after, before now, but it's been stricken out. Those racially insensitive comments and words are gone. Officially, they're not part of the document anymore. But I agree with you. No one would disagree. The way it was originally written was extremely racist and not right. We agree. But the official document he's submitting to the village, that's been stricken out. So, it's not part of it anymore, so... But I agree with Mr. Hassan, that should never, but it's gone now. It's been stricken, so what he turned in, just so you know, that may help you, what he, he's turning in, that racist part's gone. It doesn't exist. So, what he's turning in may help you in your cause.
It should be.
Okay?
That's it, that's the language it should be stricken out.
We agree. We agree. We're good.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hassan, thank you. Okay, um, I'd rather call you by your last name, Roger, but I, I can't read his writing, so, um, I, I can't tell if it's Dober?
Dober.
Do, it is. That's a B then.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dober, please.
Yeah, Roger Dober. I live at 1668 Beasterfield. And by the way, you're all doing a great job here. I've been here 32 years. I like everything you've been doing. However, I got a complaint here, because I saw it on your bulletin board. They wanna put a eight-foot sidewalk wide in front of my house. Supposed to be a bike path, multi-use path, something like that. There's not enough land to do that.
Okay, what, what, what Mr. Dober's talking about is, for a long time, um, the Bike Committee had recommended one area for transportation to connect biking from the other side of Meacham onto Beasterfield Road going toward Gibson, was, we got with Home Depot, when they did their new extension outlets, they gave us, and they're gonna pay, I think, right? They gave us money to, they're gonna install. They're gonna install a bike pedestrian path along Beasterfield by the businesses, and then in front of Mr. Dober's house, and there's two other homes, I believe, on your, your little area there, that we're gonna install, it's a five-foot sidewalk now. We're gonna make it into an eight-foot sidewalk. We had three feet on, it'd go into the parkway of, toward the street. Mr. Dober's concerned about his tree, and what else you, I know your tree, you're concerned about, Mr. Dober, what else?
Yeah, there's a couple trees there, which we take care of. We water, mulch, all this stuff. And they're like a foot wide in diameter. If you put an eight-foot sidewalk down, those trees come down.
Okay.
And I thought this was the village of trees.
Is your only concern, Mr. Dober, the trees?
That's probably the big one.
Okay, 'cause I know what's gonna happen is Kobe, you're gonna go out, Kobe himself, and Kobe, I wanna commend you. You've gone out yourself to meet with several people over the past months. They have issues. I wanna commend you for that. Nothing wrong with some people sending staff out, but you go out yourself. I wanna thank you for doing that. So, what's gonna happen is Kobe's gonna come out, he's gonna look at it. We're gonna, you should probably have the forester go out with you, too, Kobe.
And engineer also.
And engineer. We're gonna go out, engineering, forestry, and that. We're gonna look. We may have to modify the sidewalk in a way to save your trees.
Why can't they put this on the south side of Beasterfield? There's Clark Park, there's the Public Works Building. Plenty of land, no trees come down. Why do they have to move it over to the...
Are the parkways too narrow over there? 'Cause he's got a wider than a parkway, I think.
I believe part of it's an elevation issue, and then part of it's also, um...
The width of the parkway?
Accessibility to the northern, to the people who live in, um, north of Beasterfield there.
Okay, we'll do this.
We'll look into it.
We'll look again. We'll look at it. 'Cause I remember when they were talking about it. Part of the problem was, I think the width of the parkway, yours is a wider parkway, which gave more...
There's not much parkway there.
We're gonna check, no, we're gonna check, but we'll go back and recheck.
When I bought this house 32 years ago, I had like a 30-foot apron driveway
Right.
in front of my house. They redid Beasterfield.
widened it.
They cut it down to 20 feet.
Right.
They add a turning lane. Now, it's only 10 feet. And now you're gonna put an eight-foot sidewalk there. There's nothing but concrete in front of my house. That's gonna lower the value of my house.
Right, the 10-foot you're talking about, does that include the five-foot sidewalk? Does that 10-foot parkway add? So, we're only taking three feet?
It's a sidewalk of four feet and then 10 feet.
Well, the sidewalk's five feet now wide. We're gonna take three more feet.
No, it's four. I measured it today.
It's four feet? I thought it was five feet over. Okay, we'll check, we'll check. What we're gonna do, Mr. Dober, we're gonna come out. Nothing's done yet. We're gonna come out, go through all your concerns, look at potential alternatives. If we can do the other side, I know what you're saying, there's no homes. It's all park, or it's a shopping center and a public works garage. So, it'd be no homes affected, I know what you're saying.
By the way, how much is all this gonna cost?
We're, we're not paying for it.
The engineering itself is 229,000.
No, not just for engineering.
According to the, your bulletin board out there.
Not just in...
Patrick Engineering. They got a contract for 229,000.
To do that, most, no.
Engineering.
Maggie?
I believe it's part of a larger project that we are adding this to, in addition, I know we got grant funding.
Right, I was gonna tell you, we're not paying for this, Mr. Dober, the sidewalk. We got a great, no. I mean, as far as the village goes, the state's paying for it, which is a little...
So, our tax dollars.
We got a grant, yes, we got a grant from the state for this. But this is not just, you know, I want you to, the public knows. It's not 229,000 engineered just yours. What we did will, we, a lot of times what we do is, we have contracts out there, we'll tack projects onto it, 'cause it saves us money. If the engineer's already doing a project in the area, we can tack something on, and we get it for like half the normal price. But this is actually paid for by a state grant. But, before it's done, Mr...
Which is state taxes, which is our taxes.
Right.
My taxes on my house, by the way, are $12,346.
I agree.
And now I'm gonna put an eight-foot of concrete in front of my house, and you've already cut my driveway. And I'm paying $12,000 for this?
We're gonna put on, not eight feet, you already have, if it's four feet, you already got four feet. We're gonna add an additional four feet from your existing four feet.
And take down the trees.
Again, it's going on, and we're, that's what we're gonna look at, Mr. Dober. We're gonna look at your tree, and if there's a way around it, we may look at it. We may go on the other side, like you said. We're gonna reexamine it. We may do something on your side, but our goal is, no one loves trees more. I was a landscaper for a long time of my life. I love plants, I love trees, I love landscaping. If there's a way around it, we'll try to find a way around it. But again, that's a safety need for people to be able to bike, walk, and use the area. It makes it, and I wanna make sure I point out again, this will not be going on your property, Mr. Dober. This is going on the community's property, on the village property it'd be going on.
But it's gonna eliminate the parkway grass.
We're going to look at that for you, before we make any determination, anything further. Kobe will be out there, the engineer will be out there, and our forester will be out there to look. We wanna try not to hurt a tree. That's our goal. We'll work with you on that. So, before we worry too much, let's look at it again. We'll reexamine it, and the board will have to make the decision in the future to go forward or not. So, it's not decided right now. It's open till we get more information. And you're welcome to come back after they come out, and we discuss options. Fair enough? We won't make a decision until you get a chance, you wanna speak again.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. I believe, last but not least, I'm kinda holding my teeth, I always get nervous. Dr. Holman, you wanna come down? Dr. Holman's our dentist in this town, and he's doing something that's very special. We talked about it briefly earlier, but now it's almost upon us. Doctor, the floor's yours.
So, I wanted to come and officially announce, we're gonna be hosting a free dental day at our office for people who don't have the ability to, uh, afford dental treatment. It's going to be Friday, September 6th. We're gonna run it from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It'll be at my office, but I also have an oral surgeon from Elk Grove and a periodontist from Schaumburg. So, uh, Dr. Mark Spinazzi, he's the oral surgeon from Elk Grove. And then, Dr. Jennifer Silk, she's a periodontist from Schaumburg. They're both gonna be in my office as well, as, as well as my full staff and hygienists. So, we'll be running all the chairs and providing care for those in need. It's gonna be a pretty interesting day. We're gonna try, we'll guarantee that we're gonna see at least 75 people. My hope is to get to many more than that. We have a lot of volunteers helping us. Uh, we're, students from Elk Grove High School are gonna be helping us. Prince of Peace, um, has offered to lend us their parking lot and their bathrooms, just in case we overflow in our parking lot. So, they've offered to help us and, uh, open their building to us, so that's very generous of them. Um, other than that, we're gonna be providing, uh, basic care, um, extractions, fillings, cleanings. Um, we have the surgeons there, so they can do surgical extractions, so, um, very broken-down teeth, we can get them out and help people to go along with the Elk Grove Cares program. We're not gonna be prescribing any opioids that day. Um, so we wanted to kinda go in that vein with the, with the village as well. Um, and other than that, it should be a very interesting, fun, and hopefully very, very busy day. Um, we hope we get, you know, more than 75 people out there, and hopefully...
Doctor, if someone wants to go, should they call you in advance to make a time, or how does that work? Do you just show up and wait in line? What, what happens?
So, we, we actually did a bit of research into this, 'cause this is the first time we're doing it. And so, we tried to speak with some other people who have done it before, and they said they've tried everything. They've tried calling, like, in advance, setting up appointments, and they found the best way for it to work is to, it's a first-come, first-served. So, that way, you know, the first person there is gonna get in first, and then we'll kinda have a rotation to get as many people as we can. So, the downside of that is that means people will wait, um, if they're getting there early and they wanna be sure to get an appointment. Um, but the plus side is that hopefully we'll be able to maximize the amount of people that we see and help the most amount of people that we can by making sure that we're continuously staying busy and seeing as many people as possible.
And this is your intention, this is for people that do not have dental insurance, that have to pay for it themselves,
Correct.
that you wanna provide a free day of dental service on that. Well, first off, on behalf of the community, we say thank you. Um, that is really above and beyond what anyone could expect, um, and thank you very much for that. Um, I think you've already been talking to our police department. Am I correct about?
That's, uh, we, we have tentatively, this is kinda the first time where we've gotten everything together and officially said yes. So, then the next step is gonna be to speak with them, just so we can make sure there's a safe crossing if we do overflow our parking lot from Prince of Peace to come over across, um, Arlington Heights Road.
And we'll make sure, Chief, yeah, we'll make sure, work with you on that. If we knew, we always got certain people that could work and other than that. So, well, Doctor, you mentioned it earlier, you're saying it now. We can't say any more than thank you. Thank you for that. It's great, even in Elk Grove, we have a lot of people that don't have insurance, that could be huge help for them. And, um, that is actually for now. What are you doing there, Doctor?
Mayor Johnson, I have a question.
Yes, trustee Feiter?
Uh, Doctor, if this works out well, uh, when you do this on September 6th, um, will you plan on possibly doing it again?
That's the plan. So, this is really kind of a, a test to see how it goes. We hope a lot of people show up. We hope 500 people don't show up, because we don't wanna have to turn a lot of people away. Um, but we hope we kinda find that magic number where we can see, you know, almost everybody that, that gets there. But the plan would be, if this goes really well, to not only do it again next year, but try and expand it and get more surgeons or more dentists involved. So, this is kind of the, we wanted to keep it manageable this time, see how it goes, and then work out the kinks this time, so that way next year it can be bigger and better and, and more people. Uh, the one thing I do wanna mention, too, that I, um, forgot to say before, the, uh, one of the things we considered is, who did we want to see in terms of who has the most need in the community? And we decided to limit it to 18 and older. Uh, children have the opportunity, um, low income, to get Medicaid or Medicaid. And so, there is more opportunity for them to receive care, so we wanted to focus, at least this first time. And again, if next year that changes, or we see more of a need for children, then we can focus on that. But this year is going to be for adults, and then we'll see from there.
Now, are you looking just for Elk Grove residents?
No, it's open to anybody.
Okay.
Um, so, it's really whoever feels the need to come in. We're hoping it's more people who have a urgent issue, we can do cleanings, we can do fillings and things like that. But if somebody needs a tooth out, if they're a little swollen, you know, that's the people we really want to help, because that's an urgent need. And if they can't afford it, you know, the, one of the things in dentistry is that, when you go to an emergency room, you're gonna be given medication and sent home and some antibiotics and to go, go see a dentist. And it's a huge drain on the emergency rooms, it's a huge drain on funding. And so this will hopefully be a way where if we can keep 75 people out of the emergency room, or 100 people out of the emergency room, that's gonna be a benefit, not only for those people, but for the community as well.
Very good. Again, Dr. Holman's located at the corner of Devon and Arlington Heights Road, in the strip shopping center. And if you get a little early, I invite you on here, Dairy Queen's right next door. She definitely has some Dairy Queen, before you go in there. And Dr. Holman still gives out the best candy at Halloween. So, I'm just joking, I'm just joking. So, doctor, we, we thank you again, we appreciate it. And you gotta come back and let us know, yes, we'll take those.
Have some flyers.
And you gotta come back and let us know how it turned out.
Sounds good, I will.
Okay? Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Give doctor a hand, that's- Okay, it's 6 o'clock, we're an hour and a half till showtime. So anybody wants to see the Commodores, be right out there, I don't think it's still rent, I think it's nice out still, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good. So, should have a good show, excited? Mr. Nickelbacker, anything else?
No, I think you're good.
We're halfway through summer. It's sad, it's on downhill side now.
It's sad.
Won't be long, next time we come in, we'll get close to school started, fall.
And winter.
Football.
We had no spring, that's all.
Florida.
Bama ball. Okay. With that said, I need a motion to adjourn.